How many times did you download a file?
Just once.
I didn't get it.
Commissioner Zuber, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Okon?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
Commissioner Acharya is absent, and Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Zuber here, and Chairman Green.
I am here, and so is our planning staff of Lee Thurston and Jeff Goulet. Welcome to them, and welcome to everybody. We have three items tonight on the agenda to go over. They're all site plans. But before we get to that, let's talk about our last meeting, which is June 4th. We had minutes. Do I hear? Hello?
Well, thank you very much.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 4th meeting?
So moved.
Support. Got a motion to approve those minutes from June 4th and support. All in favor by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda, again, three items tonight, and some things to send to staff. Do I hear any late additions from staff on that?
No, sir.
Any late additions from the commission? Hearing none, seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve this agenda? Is that a motion?
Yes, so moved.
It's nothing to sneeze at, you know.
Oh, Chairman Green.
We got a motion. I'm sorry.
A friendly amendment to the minutes.
Oh, you have an amendment?
Yes. Item number five and item number six on pages seven and eight, respectively. Rather than nay, it should be absent for Okon and Perkins.
Yep.
Oh, okay, all right. So do we need to officially? Because we had already approved the minutes, so.
I'll correct the references.
Officially, don't want to offend Mr. Roberts and his rules. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the tonight's agenda, and I believe it was seconded, right? It was seconded down here. Voice vote, all in favor, say.
Not on the minutes.
We did. No, we already approved the minutes.
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. Don't confuse me.
Sorry.
It's easy to do. All in favor by voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so our first agenda item tonight is Canterbury Muse addition, where we're considering a site plan approval for property located south of Ford and east of Hagerty. Lee, could you tell us more about that?
The proposed site plan consists of a 2,515 square foot addition to the existing clubhouse, and 1,883 square foot addition or new building for maintenance, a maintenance garage, and a bio-retention area at the southeast corner of the cooperative. The clubhouse facilities are adjacent to the Clark Drain and I-275 on the east side of Hagerty, and the project representative is requesting a modification to the 50 percent brick requirement in order to match the existing construction. This was originally built in '73. It's been added on to about 10 years ago, and those are with siding. There is no brick, so we felt that was appropriate. The site plan is consistent with the original site plan and meets all applicable requirements of the zoning code with the exception of a facade material and a non-disturbed buffer. The clubhouse, the maintenance garage, and bio-retention area are being proposed to better serve the residents of the cooperative. The existing clubhouse has vinyl siding, and consistent use of the vinyl is appropriate for the additions. The zoning board of appeals approved a variance for the encroachment into the non-disturbed water course buffer on June 14th, as the proposed addition projects into the buffer. The existing buffer area is a lawn that slopes down to a natural drain and edge of trees. When this was last added on to, the buffer requirement was slightly different. Now it's a little wider, so that's the issue with the drain buffer. So the proposed addition should not disturb the natural drain. Minor encroachment into the lawn area of the buffer will provide construction access, and erosion control measures will protect the drain. The proposed bio-retention area will capture additional stormwater for the improvements.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Let us go down this end. Commissioner? I'm sorry. Oh, were you done?
A motion, recommendation for approval, and a motion if you like.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Project sponsors are here if you have any questions.
Okay, project sponsors here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, would you come up and say a few things to us? I'm sorry, Lee, I didn't mean to cut you off. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Rizzo with Fenn and Associates, and we're doing the surveying and civil engineering for Dino de Mer and PPS.
And the architect, Robert Wakely, did the building.
Yeah, and like Lee Thurston mentioned, about, you know, 12 years ago or so, we did, you know, an addition to this. Turned out really nice, and apparently they need more space, you know, for their facility, so we've, you know, designed this addition to fit in there, you know, the best we can with the features, and we think it's a nice little project. If you have any questions, you know, architecturally or civil engineering-wise, we're up here to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much, and we're going to go right to the commission, and you don't have to stay up there, but if you would be available to answer any questions that we might have, it'd be great. All right, we're going to go down this end. Commissioner Okon, do you have anything that you would like to ask or add?
Nope, all set, thank you.
Bennett?
No, no questions.
Egenberger?
No questions, thank you.
Perkins?
No questions.
Zuber?
No questions.
We're going to roll it right through here. Commissioner Engel?
I'm all set, thanks.
You're all set, okay. And we're going. We have late additions down here.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Acharya did arrive.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
No, I mean, the zoning board approved it. They went before them, and they approved it.
Okay. And Commissioner Acharya?
I'm all set.
You're all set. And I am all set as well. It looks like it's a needed project, obviously, and it fits in with the original design. I have no issues with it. Looks like the diligence was done in terms of drainage and care in that regard, so I see no problem with it myself. So with that said.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the proposed site plan for the Canterbury Muse Cooperative additions, including the brick material modifications on parcel number
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber on this project. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Project goes forth, and what's their next step, Jeff and Lee?
Presented to the township board for final approval two weeks from tomorrow.
All right, good luck to you. All right. Our second agenda item tonight is the Tractor Supply Company, where we're considering a site plan approval for a parcel which is located, a property which is located south of Michigan between Sheldon and Morton Taylor. Jeff, could you tell us more about that one?
Yes, the planning commission board reviewed and approved a special land use for the tractor supply, for the outdoor sales area portion of the business. This is located where Levonia Magnetics is currently located, or just has recently vacated the property. They're going to be taking the building, tearing the portion of the front of the building off, and adding a vestibule onto the front and an addition onto the back. So the total size of the building, when completed, will be just over 21,000. And then the yellow area shown on the conceptual site plan, or the schematic site plan up here, is the outdoor sales area, which will be kind of like a garden area, like Lowe's or Home Depot would have, and it would basically be their outdoor sales for their trailers and their garden supplies, those kinds of things that they sell outside for their farm equipment and those kinds of things. The ZBA did grant a variance for that, to allow them to use a standard. Under the building materials sales establishment, they'd have to have a full 14-foot tall wall. This one will have a typical three-foot knee wall with a five-foot wrought iron section with piers, and those areas where the storage areas will be on racks or shelved areas, you know, near the exterior, that wall has to be taller. I've recommended that they move some areas of fencing and things around on the inside to get them away from the exterior boundary of that, so they can consolidate that stuff in the inside of the display area, so they're not fully visible, you know, through the fenced area on the east side of the enclosure. The site will use a common driveway from Michigan Avenue and utilize a common storm system with the Cube Smart Storage, which will be to the east and the south of this property. You can see that kind of grade out of the property. That site plan is also under review by staff, and it'll be kind of done in conjunction with this, once the board approves it. As an industrial site plan, that doesn't have to come to the planning commission, but you kind of reviewed the schematic of all of that together with the special land use a couple months ago. The Tractor Supply has a sidewalk sales area in front of the building they normally use. In this particular case, Mr. Jarboe is adding kind of a windowed and roofed vestibule to enclose that thing, to meet our commercial codes, because we don't allow outside display in front of the building. So Mr. Jarboe is here to explain the project in more detail and answering questions you have. While he's talking, I'll bring up the images.
Okay, Jeff, thank you very much, and welcome, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, I'm good. Did you have anything to add to what Jeff has said?
Yeah, we purchased, actually, the east side, five acres, the Garland Place Apartments, maybe about seven, eight years ago, and just looking for the right use for it. We've obviously tore it down since, and through our findings and developing what could possibly go there, we acquired the Levonia Magnetics building, brought Tractor Supply, and then going to develop both sites at the same time. I think it's a very good use for the existing building. We're going to put a tremendous amount of infrastructure into the site and also the building, so just another, I think this marks our fifth development in the city, and just like we love doing developments here. I did bring a board with the samples of, if I could pass that around.
Yeah, if you would.
Yeah, there were certain details in the site plan. You'll see several conditions in the motion. They can make those changes before it goes to the board. I didn't feel we needed to wait until August to get them back before you to have those changes made, so as long as you're comfortable with the building materials that Frank is showing you, we'll have those incorporated into revised plans before it goes to the township board.
All right, well, while that's happening, if you wouldn't mind, if there's any questions or comments, I'm going to start down here with Commissioner Acharya. Did you have any, anything you want to add to this?
No question.
And Commissioner Graham Hudak?
So Jeff, I mean, from the last time we saw it and how it was explained, are there any, there doesn't seem like to be any major changes at all.
Yeah, they've fleshed out the landscape plan. They still have a little bit of work to do on the lighting plan, based on our analysis of that. Essentially, it was in pretty good shape last time when it came through for special land use for site plans, and we're just kind of continuing to go through the minor details of those to get those all straightened out before it goes to the board, so.
Oh, so it has to go before the board, but?
Yeah, he should have the plans in for the board in two weeks, so.
Thank you.
I'm all set. Dawn?
Oh, I'm all set, sorry. Except I do, I actually do have a question about the materials. It says corrugated metal panel, but it's more plasticky.
Looks like plastic.
Is there a, on the samples you sent around?
Sample?
Yeah.
They might have used, there's metal out there, and there's products out there today that are plastic but are, look just like metal. It just has longer wear on it, and then, so that way they don't rust, so.
Is that the area behind the sign panel?
Kind of like calling something, you know, like in Gulf Woods, when they're now metal, right?
Exactly.
Simulated metal, yeah.
Simulated metal, there you go.
It should be metal.
We have, now, we, there's panels out there that look like wood, but are real
metal, so.
True, and ceramic tile too, but anyway.
Mr. Zuber, was that all you had?
That's all I had, thank you.
Commissioner Perkins?
I, no questions.
Commissioner Egenberger?
No questions.
Commissioner Bennett?
Looks good.
Commissioner Okon?
Great redevelopment, looks good.
All right, looks like it's pretty much unanimous, we're okay with it. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Sure. I move to, I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Tractor Supply Company on the said parcels, subject to replacement of the painted concrete block for the outdoor sales enclosure and trash enclosure with an integral colored masonry that coordinates with the new brick, adjustment of the lighting plan to increase the light levels at the front of the building and main driveway areas, relocation of the water main loop, and minor corrections to the landscape plan pursuant to the Development Review Committee comments prior to consideration of the site plan by the Board of Trustees.
Support.
Oh. Who is the Development Committee?
Staff.
Oh, good question.
They would be asked.
I just read it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Perkins. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioner Zuber, could you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Acharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
And our approval, recommendation to the board. Next step, Jeff?
Township board in two weeks.
About the Development Committee?
If that's back to me, if they're clean, they go to the board. If they're not clean, they don't go to the board.
Just curious.
Good luck to you, sir. Yep, okay. Our third agenda item tonight is Uptown Apartments Phase Four, where we're considering a site plan approval for property located north of Cherry Hill between Ridge and Denton. Lee, could you tell us more about that?
Sure. The project sponsor proposes a fourth phase to the Uptown Apartments, consisting of eight buildings totaling 152 units, to be located in the west side of Denton Road, north of Cherry Hill. The buildings are a combination of two and three stories with brick and siding. The elevations of the buildings facing Denton have been modified to include more brick so that it feels like the front of the building. Provisions include access to a new clubhouse and pool facility, and completion of the sidewalk on Uptown Avenue and Denton Road. The plan conforms to the Plan Development Agreement and the agreements and the requirements of the zoning ordinance with the following exceptions. Inclusion of architectural plans for the carports and trash enclosures in the plan set. Showing carport locations consistently on all the plans. Showing the location of the existing monument sign and the specification for the sign. Making minor landscape changes, and indicating streetlights on both sides of the intersection of Uptown Avenue and Denton Road, and providing a poll detail. The project sponsor is here. Will you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Zach Weiss with BezTech, here to answer any questions. This is a great opportunity to continue a longstanding project in the community with the latest phase.
Welcome. I think BezTech's been here right from day one in Cherry Hill Village, right?
This is the last phase of Uptown, so other than the outstanding commercial track, this will complete the apartment phases.
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're going to play this one kind of, kind of loose a little bit. Just don't try to speak over each other. Anyone have any comments or questions?
No, I'm just, what are entrances?
I'm sorry?
What are the entrances?
Okay, go ahead and make a question.
That's a question.
What are the entrances? Jeff, can you go back to this, this screen?
Site plan?
Yes.
Looks like they're off of Chester Arthur Road and Uptown Avenue, I think this is.
Uptown Avenue was, was done with the last phase, so all of the entrances and driveway entrances will be off of Uptown and Chester Arthur.
So you can't see the driveway off of Denton?
No, only through Uptown Avenue.
Okay.
Oh, well, that's good, yeah. Oh, this is Uptown Avenue.
I have a couple.
There's a drive cut right here.
Say it again?
There's a drive cut right here, you'll see, next to Building 48.
Okay, right.
It doesn't depict that. Currently, the drive cuts that you show on Uptown Avenue, some of those will be closed back off, and the different one will be opened up, because when this was originally done, it was, remember, it was the senior apartments, so those drive cuts were put in there to accommodate the original plan for the senior apartments, so they have to reconfigure where the drive cuts are on Uptown Avenue, so.
Thank you.
Jeff, could you pull up the elevations, or Lee, pull up the elevations? I was kind of confused by the configuration. Not that one, the next set, I think. Go up to the next sheet, next page? Well, okay, that one, that's right there. Rear elevation B. Is there a reason, and this might be a question you could answer, sir, about the, the design?
Yes.
Boy, for our architect here.
Let me answer.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is an existing building that's out there, okay? So this is an internal building, and it matches what was out there. What we had them do is when, where this building faces Denton Road, then you need to go down to this elevation, and this is what you'll see. This is the backside.
Okay, so if.
Facing Denton Road. This is the discussion we had during the PDD review. So this is the same building. The front elevation is the front, and the back is, now has brick on it, so the rear elevation B is what you'll see from Denton Road, because it faces the other direction in terms of the way the entrances to the building work. That's why we want them to beef that up, so that the back and the front look similar.
I see, I see.
This is the, so rear elevation B on the 200 building, where your site plan, it indicates, each building indicates which building and which elevation it is on the, on the site plan on each of those buildings.
Okay, so basically, if you're now looking at it from a major road.
You'll see brick. If it's inside, you will not see.
Will not see brick.
Right.
And I have a problem with that, and you, we've had this discussion.
Well, except on the inside of this one, for example, you'll see, this is the front, because the, this front has naturally brick. So most of the buildings, you'll see more brick than what you see out there currently, because of the way the buildings are oriented.
I guess what I would like to see is, is a little bit more token brick on, on that one that has just the knee wall high brick, you know, maybe something vertically.
Well, we have to look at where it's at on the plan, so look at, look back on the site plan.
It's going to be seen regardless of where it's at. It's going to be seen.
Yeah, but there's carports in front of it, Greg.
There's carports. Carports don't go all the way up.
I believe there are, there is more brick on these plans than the original building types that are elsewhere in the property.
He's talking about the rear elevation, the one we're showing here, that's almost all siding, Zach.
I'm looking at the middle part, I'm going, God.
But he's talking about this particular building.
Vertical brick going on.
I was looking at the site plan here to figure out where, which buildings are which elevation, and I think that the B, it looks like.
Really have to match these to the, what's shown on the depiction on the site plan, because we had them put which elevation and which building it was on each of the buildings.
B building is like the perimeter, it looks like.
So Jeff, for example, Building 50 on Plan 300, is that a?
No, it's, it's.
Plan 300, and what does this 50 mean?
Well, I think 300 is the, is the building type.
That has a rear entrance facing Denton Road, correct?
Right, so in the circles, yeah, so in the circles on the site plan, so you'll see, like Building 50 is actually building type four. That's a different whole building. The one I showed you was Building 200, and that's the one where they put the brick on the Denton Road side. So Building 200, they're all 20-unit buildings, except for the one building at the corner of Uptown Avenue and Denton Road, and that's a whole different building type. It matches the one over on Ridge Road. That was one of the original building types that they put in here, because it fit better, and that one, that originally had a lot of brick on it to begin with, so they didn't have to change that one. The one we wanted changed was the Denton Road elevation on Building, is it 50? I can't read it. Building 52. So 52, you'll see it's Building 200, Plan 200, and then it has the, well, yeah, whoops, yeah, Building 51. That's the one that has the brick on the Denton Road side. So what you're concerned with is Building 200 on Building 52, where it's almost all siding.
Right. And, and my contention always is, there's nothing unseen in Canton, and so we need to present a product that is really, really, really good, and that doesn't mean that you have to have the same amount of brick on all facades, but, you know, just, I don't know, it just seems to cheapen it when we just.
It would be Building basically 46, 47, 52, and 45, is what you'd be concerned with.
Right, and if you go back to that elevation, I guess I can delineate kind of what I'm looking at, and, and, you know, maybe I'm way off base, I don't know. But in the middle of that, that elevation, Plan B on the lower right, I'm looking at the middle part of that, and I'm thinking, jeez, you know, there needs to be some vertical element to that, that, that pops, that stands out, and what, what better way to do that than to add some brick going, going up like that? And I know that that changes foundation design and so on and so forth.
And I believe that is consistent with the earlier building types that we have on the property.
I understand that.
And these were, these were originally approved as part of the overall plan for the PDD. So these building elevations were approved with those phases of the PDD.
How does everybody else feel on this? Am I just?
Elevation, elevation A has very little brick, and so that's Plan 100, which you would see at the corner.
Of, almost at the corner of Denton.
Right, but this particular design is a lot different, that's why there is no brick on it, because this one has a whole different type of roof line. It's more colonial, which you would not normally see brick on this style of building, which, which is why this particular elevation didn't have brick on it. So in, in Uptown, if you go back to the original, you know, some of the original styles in Uptown, some of them had brick on them, like the ones on Ridge Road, and some of them didn't have brick on it, based on, one, the roof line and the actual style of the building. So this is the same building footprint, but they have two different roof lines and two different porch styles, so they look like two different buildings from the outside. So that's why the 100 building doesn't have brick on it at all. The other ones, you know, had the flatter, kind of Mansard-type roof on it, instead of the, you know, instead of the more colonial gabled, you know, roof line.
If everyone else is okay with that, then I guess I can be okay with it as well. But it just, it hit me when I first saw that elevation, I'm going, wow, that looks awfully stark without the brick.
What does their architect think?
Pardon?
Their. Dawn?
Um, I agree, it looks a little, it looks a little plain, but I also feel like if we've already, if it's already been approved in a PDD, then, I don't know, I mean.
Ask them to add more brick, that's going to be up to them on whether they feel that there's a value add, because it's, one, it's not visible to the roads. Once these all go in, they're going to be basically, you know, the backs of these buildings are going to be adjacent to landscape courtyard, so you're going to have trees growing up in between the buildings. So if you look at how the buildings are arranged, these sides basically have, are going to have, you know, 20 to 30-foot trees that are growing up in between them.
Never looks as good as it does on the landscape plan. It takes a long time to get to that point, so I think that, you know, we do need to be aware of that, too. It's not going to cover it now, or even next year, or, you know, once it's built, so.
But in 10 years, the trees will be more mature, and that brick will go away, so.
Can you just look at that? This is true.
I mean, Uptown is already 15 years old. I mean, Uptown is already 15 years old.
So, I guess the consensus is, it's okay?
I mean, that's up to you.
I mean, I guess because we, it's in the PDD, you're saying change is difficult?
Well, the building elevator, when you looked at the PDD, these were the elevations that were provided to you, and we made specific recommendations in the PDD agreement on which buildings you wanted to change. And those were specifically the ones, you know, adjacent to the roadways and that were along Denton Road because we didn't want to see this blank facade on Denton Road. So, that's why we have, that's why we have, see, the, see, on this particular building, you have a lot of brick because it's a whole different style of building. This is the 300 building.
You're saying the roof line dictates whether there's siding or brick?
Some degree, yes. It's like on this particular one, the, the whole back is a lot different because it has integrated garages in the back of it. So, you have a lot of different roof lines on the back of this building, too. So, the PDD amendment was approved four or five months ago.
Oh, okay.
But the PDD amendment, that happened before that, when this building was introduced, these were those styles that were introduced with that particular PDD amendment. And then they expanded, you know, this particular building type into this phase. So, I mean, I think there's, so depending on where, you know, if the buildings are, have side-loaded garages, you know, you have a couple of different elevations depending on where they sit and what roof line they have. So, these buildings have different roof lines. They have different, you know, a couple of them have different garage orientations.
Jeff, on that, right, you have right there, front elevation A, 100 building, are those garage doors there, or what are those three white things?
Those are pass-throughs. That's how you get access to the stairwells.
Yeah, that's the building access.
Those are your breezeways.
Covered sidewalk or something?
There are internal breezeways on the first floor to get to the stairwells, so.
Okay.
They all have those.
Seems like as long as they're looking like what they're supposed to be.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Particular style, yeah, okay.
About ADA compliance? I mean, do you have any units that somebody in a wheelchair could get in? Because I know a lot of our ADA disabled people are saying that they'd like to move into some of the newer buildings, but they can't because there's, the access isn't there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it'll be consistent with what's required. I'm not sure of the number, but I'm, I'm sure the ground floor units are...
I think all of our first floor units are ADA accessible, I think, so.
Give ramps out to the parking structure or to the parking lot or to the carport?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be, um, access, accessible access from the parking areas to the buildings, to the entrances.
They have to be cognizant of the longitudinal and the cross slopes between, you know, on the ADA accessible way from the building to the parking area and to the carports where the, you know, handicap.
There's a, there's a required slope. It can't be more than a certain degrees for an accessible route to the entrances.
Once you're in the carport, how would you get in? Like, if you have a wheelchair, you couldn't, would you be able to get your car into the carport and...
They have so many van accessible spots. If it's gonna be a van accessible space, otherwise they're just general car parking depending on what your handicap is.
So someone...
They have to have so many van accessible spaces within the parking area.
And, and there, the, the van accessible spaces allow someone in a wheelchair to access the sidewalks through, you know, ramps and accessible routes to the buildings.
Right. Now, our entrance, I'm sorry, go ahead, Craig.
No, no, I'm good, I'm good.
Their entrance, we saw, you said was only in Uptown, but I know that you still have to empty out into Denton Road, is that correct?
It goes all the way out to Ridge. There are three accesses out to Cherry Hill Road through the apartment complex. There's a block system that runs from Uptown Avenue all the way down to Cherry Hill. There's Chester Arthur, there's a couple other streets, there's one by the coffee, there's two or three access roads that come down to Cherry Hill Road if you look at the overall aerial.
I just know we were having that traffic issue with Cherry Hill and Denton there with one of our previous projects.
There's, there's, there's probably six access points, two off of Ridge, three off of Cherry Hill, and then Uptown Avenue that come, that serve the apartment complex.
And then, is there access to a sidewalk that goes around so people could connect to just walk?
They have, they have the bike path that runs right through the apartment complexes.
Oh, there is a bike path? Which one?
Goes all the way up to the ITC corridor into the dog park. That's already, that's already in existence, Anne Marie.
I mean, I, I just don't see it on here.
Because it's further to the west. It's to the west of the clubhouse.
Doesn't go over that way.
Very, well, they'll have sidewalks along Denton Road and sidewalks internally that connect to the bike path. So, that's what they're completing is the sidewalk system along Denton and the sidewalk system along Uptown Avenue with this last phase.
And all the utility access is right on site? You don't have to cross any of the roads?
Buildings are already in place.
I know this isn't part of this project, but Anne Marie brings up a question that, you know, maybe can be answered at a later date. So, they're required to have sidewalk put in up to the, the edge of their property line here. The dog park has no sidewalk in front of it. How is that, do we have a plan?
The township will have to extend the sidewalk at some point in time.
Township will have to go through the gap plan?
We have internal connection to the dog park through the bike path and through, and from the...
I'm just talking about along Denton.
That'll be part of the gap program. It's township property. When there's, when, when it's needed to be put in, Eric will have a plan to put that in, so.
Development to the north that...
Right, because they have to extend sidewalk down from landings down.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions, concerns? Yes.
Going back to the building type 200, it's pretty much whether it's the elevation of the rear or the left side. There's no brick at all, right? Understand it right?
What do you, what do you mean that, oh, and there's no brick? Those, I'm, I'm not quite sure. I think they'll, they'll definitely have less brick.
They all have a brick base.
Yeah, they all have the, the...
Up to the bottom of the windows.
Up to the first, looks up to the first window, the bottom of the first windows.
Nation of Cherry Hill Village homes have the brick base up to, you know, three feet generally. So, the, you know, the apartments emulated that where they were primarily siding, so.
Jeff, just a quick question. In the executive summary, it says provisions include access to a new clubhouse and pool. That was, that's the other...
This was, yeah, this was Phase Three, which the clubhouse is being rebuilt, right? So, this will provide that access along, along Uptown Avenue to get to the clubhouse.
I can't remember, is there, is there a playscape there or anything for the kids? Is there?
I don't know that there's a...
I can't recall. I know there's a brand-new clubhouse, I think in the last year or so, new pool, a lot of new splash pads and things like that. I'm not sure about a play structure.
Nice, you know, I look at this landscape plan, it just would be nice to be able to throw in kind of a playscape or something for the, for the kids. There's just seems like a lot of...
Yeah, I agree.
Lot of landscaping going around.
A large covered patio area. And, yeah, there, there's a lot of deck around the pool. And, and I believe there's a kiddie pool or splash pad. It was just done last year.
Anyway, we can get, we can get a little playscape or anything in this phase so they don't have to go all the way to the middle?
Can you go back and talk to Mark on whether or not you could add some play equipment to the clubhouse area?
Yeah, I, I will ask about that.
Okay, anyone else from the commission?
How would we know the outcome of, of your collaboration? About the playscape? How will we, will it...
I need to find out what's there to begin with, and if they're gonna add something, they'll have to give us a plan for that. So, that was in the last phase, so they'll have to do that independently from this.
Want them to add a, a playscape on this particular site?
Oh, it would have to be at the clubhouse.
A room on this site?
But to be in and around the clubhouse and the pool area, which is just a block away.
Oh, I just got response that there is a playscape already at the clubhouse, so.
Well, you're quick.
Yeah, he's texting while we're talking.
Under technology, don't you love it? Don't you love it? Okay.
Can I ask a question? Jeff, then, when we, this goes before the board, can we have the entire minutes? Have we been doing excerpts lately? And I know that the board will sometimes ask questions that the commission's already asked. So, could we use the whole minutes, then, for the...
The whole minutes of what?
Of this meeting. Like, when this goes before the board, a lot, lately what we've been seeing is just pieces of it saying excerpt from...
Well, we'll give you the excerpt of this item for each item.
Right, right. But it just seems...
Because these three items are all going to the board at the same time, you'll end up having the three excerpts that you can read together.
Right, no.
But we're not gonna give you 20 pages of, of minutes for each agenda item that goes to the board. We're gonna give you the excerpt for that item.
For this item, right, the entire excerpt. It seems like we've been getting less than what's in the original minutes.
Give the excerpt, whatever the approved minutes is for that item, the Connie puts in with the board item.
Yeah, that's another thing, is we get, the minutes aren't approved before they go to the board. Not that we've made major changes.
Right, they never are, so.
The location of the playscape is next to the original clubhouse.
Okay, so that's back in the, so the playscape, the, the original clubhouse and pool was in the north and on the Phase One, is, so it's a little bit further to the west, so.
That's only about a block.
Yes. The next corner, just on the north end.
Through the parking lots.
Path, so.
It's a path, the parking lot. Go back where the streetlights are going.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Uptown Apartments, Phase Four, on tax parcel number 0710729900370, subject to including architectural plans for the carports and trash enclosure, showing carport locations consistently, showing the existing monument sign, and providing specifications for the sign. Making minor landscape changes, including streetlights on both sides of Uptown Avenue and Denton Road, and providing a light pole detail. Support. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, hearing none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Oken?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes. So, this project goes forward to the board when, two weeks, two weeks. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Right, carry on.
Just want, just want to clarify, I know some of the, the comments, they've already been addressed and they've been submitted today, a new version. So, obviously, it wasn't ready for review, but all the comments...
I think Mark is ready to resubmit them for our final review.
Correct, correct. And, and the sign is already existing. Just wanted to clear that up.
Needed to see a, a picture of it on the site plan since it's already there.
Ah, I got it. All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
They just, for people who don't drive there, we just wanted, you know, that detail should be on the plan. So, we can help you out with that.
All right, we've got some work to send to staff. Referral for Cube Smart Mini Storage, Famous Hamburger, and Hampton Manor of Canton. Do I, I think that was it, isn't it? Yeah. Do I hear a motion to refer that to staff?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a public hearing to set for August 13th. That'd be the Hampton Manor of Canton, final PDD. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, any final discussion items? Anything you wanna talk to us about?
What's that young man in the back? What development's here for?
Move to adjourn, Chairman.
Support.
All right, have a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.